I'd like to call the meeting to order at sixteen oh five and acknowledge that the District of Tefino does operate within the territory of the Tofuquiat First Nation. And a notice to attendees that the meeting is being video recorded and will be published to the District of Tefino's YouTube channel. From the chair, I'll move the approval of the meeting. That for saying to section fifteen of the District of Tefino meeting procedure by law number one two two nine twenty sixteen has amended. The May fifteenth twenty twenty three special committee of the whole meeting be held electronically via Zoom and live broadcast on the District of Tefino's YouTube channel. And the facility provided for the public to watch in here, the meeting be located at Municipal three eighty Camel Street in Tefino, British Columbia. Thank you for that. A favor, well loved of that. I will make an amendment to the agenda. And if we could, friendly amendment here to move five point two media policy amendment up to five point one. I will second, thank you, all in favor. Excellent, thank you, motion carried. With no further delay, let me just make sure that we don't have any public comments on agenda item.
Thank you, Acting Chair. I'm so sure it currently there's no questions from the public. I will make call to anyone attending via Zoom to leave comments to Mayor and Council. You can do so now by stating your name, your address, and the agenda item you were speaking to. And so calling once, calling twice, calling three times, and no questions, such as.
Great, thank you. So with not any further ado, we have five point one on the agenda, media policy amendments, verbal report from Legislative Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Hello, all right, I have a PowerPoint presentation here that I'll just pull up.
There's Al. If, sorry, Jamie. We just have Al walking into the room right now. There he is, we'll just give him a second to maybe get seated. And we can start from the beginning.
Okay, sure, sounds good.
Excellent. Go ahead there, Ms. Larson.
Thank you very much, I'll just get this PowerPoint presentation pulled up, just give me one moment. Hi, thank you, all right, so are you able to see my, my presentation there on the screen?
We are.
Thank you. So this evening I have a verbal report from Mayor and Council. This is on Council's media policy that has been, that was adopted a few years ago now, and it's been a number of years since Council has reviewed it. And so just with some changes that have taken place with the district's reorganizational structure and some new staffing that has increased corporate communication service delivery capacity. We've staff have begun reviewing the media policy and proposed a few amendments. So the main purpose of the amendments that we're proposing today is cleaning up the section on the district spokespeople. So clarifying the responsibility and cleaning up the language a little bit for responsibility and approval of district spokespeople. With the district reorg, we have had a few administrative processes that have changed. And so we are proposing to better align the new policy or potential amendments with current administrative requirements by shifting internal notification processes. The, the policy amendments propose to expand and improve on media relation procedures to support accessible, consistent, and reliable access to information. So just continuing to further that objective. And then also aims to incorporate the communications coordinator role into the media relations process. Because back in twenty nineteen, when the media policy was adopted, that position wasn't, didn't exist within the organization. And so that is a new role that has a fairly large hand in communications and media relations. Just a little bit of background. So as part of the two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen strategic plan, Council made improved communication and citizen engagement and local government decision making and service delivery a priority. So that's what kickstarted the media policy that Council currently has. And in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, the district worked with Mickelson Consulting, who developed a communication strategy, and that was developed to form the foundation of future district communication tactics. Then in twenty nineteen, Council adopted the current media policy. And fast forward a couple of years, since twenty twenty one, the communication strategy has been further resourced with a full-time communications coordinator. So that position was hired part-time in twenty twenty one and, and then progressed to full-time position. So the current media policy has some standing principles. The purpose of the policy is to provide high standards and consistency in district media relations, to protect the reputation of the brand of the district, using consistent processes, consistent language, consistent graphics across our communication tactics, and also building professional respectful relationships with media. The scope of the policy includes five different sections, and that's approved spokespeople, notification requirements and processes, content approvals, emergency operations center activations. And then, sorry, at the bottom there, this is into section in the policy. But I just to note that the media policy currently doesn't include the communication coordinator's role within it. So a highlight of the proposed changes that staff are recommending is cleaning up a little bit of the language around the approved spokespeople section to clarify their roles. There's a little bit of language in there that speaks, kind of gets into the weeds a little bit, if you will, in terms of when someone other than an approved spokesperson, such as potentially a director or a staff member or a subject matter expert, may be the best spokesperson for the district. We've just sort of removed some of those what-if scenarios from the main approved spokespeople section and clarified the roles of, of the actual approved spokesperson and how they would assign responsibility for another member. And so we've moved those out of that section into a different section of the policy. Under the approved spokespeople section, we've also included language, or we are proposing to include language to delegate responsibility from the mayor or C A O, which are currently the approved spokespeople, to the E O C director for approving and designating spokespeople during an E O C activation. So that currently is the practice that we or the district uses during E O C activations. It was never written into the policy, but during emergencies where we do have the E O C activated, all communications do funnel through the emergency operations center. And so the E O C director currently is responsible for approving and designating spokespeople during those types of emergency scenarios. So another section of the policy that we are proposing to amend is the media coordination and internal notification section. And so currently it is the C A O that is responsible for being notified if any media request or, or any media sort of notification. And we are proposing to shift responsibility to the manager of Legislative Services and approved spokespersons for media inquiry notification instead of the mayor and C A O. And that's just a little bit of an internal administrative update. Our process would still always be to notify whoever the approved spokesperson is. But just in terms of district administrative functions, having the manager of Legislative Services be the, the staff member that gets notified and then disseminates those notifications to the C A O, to the mayor, if they happen to be the approved spokespeople and any other staff members, makes a little bit more sense in our current staffing structure than the C A O. And then next, we'd like to incorporate the communications coordinator into the policy. And so there, in the communications coordinator job description, there are quite a few provisions in that role for media liaison and media contact responsibilities. And so we are proposing to designate the communications coordinator as the primary media liaison and contact for the district. They would also be the primary contact on news releases. So that just includes their name, title, and their communications at tefino.ca at the bottom of news releases. So they should, they would be contacted first by any media that had any questions or wanted to arrange interviews based on published news releases. And then we propose to shift responsibility from the C A O to the communications coordinator to contact media regarding incorrect reporting. And so that really fits a little bit better with the communications coordinator role than the C A O's role with the current district staffing structure. And so we propose to, to include that in the policy. And then lastly, shifting responsibility from the C A O to the communications coordinator to coordinate distribution of media releases to Mayor and Council prior to distribution to media. And so that is currently our practice, that prior to publishing any media inquiries, we will send them to Mayor and Council first. And this just says to have that be the communications coordinator's responsibility as opposed to the C A O's. So some of the reasons for these proposed changes, edits to this approved spokespeople section includes highlighting the E O C director as being responsible for approving spokespeople during activations or emergency activations and moves other policy details to more relevant sections. So it sort of cleans up and it makes, makes it a little bit more clear who the approved spokespeople are and what the process is for delegating that responsibility. We propose to shift notification requirements from the C A O and mayor to the manager of Legislative Services and the approved spokesperson. And that will fulfill administrative procedural requirements. And then lastly, we propose designated the communications coordinator as the primary liaison and contact, which will incorporate that role into the process and set some guidelines for media coordination and support, which will sort of fill, fill the void that we have between the old policy, which, which doesn't include the new communications coordinator role. And so lastly, the recommendation, should Council like to make any changes or amendments to the current media policy, the recommendation could, could be something like this, which is that staff be authorized to bring forward amendments to the media policy. And if there's specific language or, or specific provisions that, that I mentioned that maybe Council isn't comfortable with, I think this is a good opportunity to, to discuss those. And then I can bring forward potential amendments at a future regular council meeting. Well, thank you very much, I'll stop my share, and then if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Great, thank you, Ms. Larson. I believe there is going to be a question here, Mayor Law.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Right now, the mayor or acting mayor is the official spokesperson for the district. Correct? That's right.
That is correct, yeah.
And, and right now, the C A O and mayor must be informed of all media inquiries.
Correct.
So you're, are you suggesting that those, both those policy points change?
Thank you for the question, Mary-Lyn. No, not exactly. So you, we wouldn't be changing that the mayor or the acting mayor are the approved spokespeople. So that would stay the same in the proposed amendments. The C A O would continue to provide backup to the role. And so that top section there, if you see the policy in front of you, section A, or sorry, three A one, it would still be the mayor, acting mayor, that were the approved spokespeople with the C A O as backup. The change would be that essentially, instead of all media inquiries going from the communications coordinator, potentially directly to the mayor and the C A O, they would come to the manager of Legislative Services. And then part of our procedures outside this policy would be always to send media inquiries to the approved spokespeople. And so that would be the mayor, acting mayor, or C A O, depending on, on the situation. So I think what it does is it, it supports the administrative processes of the district a little bit more, while also accounting for the fact that potentially there would be, by using language approved spokespeople, it accounts for the fact that potentially the mayor or the C A O or the acting mayor may not be the people that are available in that, in that order. And so our process would still be that mayor, acting mayor, C A O. But by using approved spokespeople as opposed to those specific titles in every situation, then it gives us a little bit more flexibility. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that, like, I, I think right now, it's, it's, I just, I guess I just want to make sure that, that myself and Nyla are informed of media inquiries consistently. I think that's been, it's been quite important in, in both of our roles. So I just want to make sure that, that, that language. I thought when we discussed it, I thought we had changed some of those proposals, but, is that, yeah?
Thank you, I'm sure the chair, Tim Mayor Law. Yes, the, the spokes, the spokespeople will remain the same, and so that's, that's clear in the policy. What I think has, hasn't been happening is looping in the manager of Legislative Services for all media requests. And that manager is responsible for delegating the duties to their staff. So it helps us manage the workload and keeps the manager informed. And so immediately when a request will come in, the procedure will be the same, that the mayor and the C A O become aware, because those are typically the spokespeople that we begin with. If it were to be a subject matter expert that was required amongst staff for wastewater treatment plant or, or a fire emergency, then we would inform that spokesperson as well. And so the, the policy just broadens when it comes to media quests coming in, that spokespeople will be notified. And that may differ from circumstance to circumstance. It does not change that the mayor is the, and the acting mayor is the spokesperson.
Any further questions from Council? I just have one somewhat, often councilors will get direct requests from media in the past, I certainly have. In, in circumstances such as that, would it be then appropriate to refer to Legislative Services to make those arrangements, let's say, instead of jumping right on there, talking out loud?
Thank you, Chairs, dear, yes, that, that would be a good process to practice. That way Legislative Services can support in whatever way potentially a council needs or, you know, provide talking points, provide key messaging, do sort of the legwork around what's required to prepare any spokesperson for any kind of media statement or interview. And so having those requests directed to Legislative Services does support all of, all of the potential spokespeople. And then also administratively, it may, it may be that you know, a council member gets a request for a media interview. However, per this policy, it, it would be the mayor or the acting mayor, and you know, and then we go down that line for approved spokespeople. And so funneling everything through Legislative Services helps clarify the role for, for each council member so we can provide better support and then also potentially streamline the process for, for spokespeople as well. And so bring that back to the mayor and the acting mayor as opposed to arming every council member with, with interviews as, as they come up.
Thank you.
Well, just note, we don't have the policy in front of us. So I think maybe councilors may not be aware of the limitations of our communication policy, the policy that, that councilors are not fettered in their opinion. Any counselor can share their personal opinion on a matter with media outside of this policy. This policy specifically talks about official council decisions or being a spokesperson of the district. So just to make sure that is not changing.
Thank you, Mary-Lyn, that is, that's correct, that, that's not being proposed to be changed in the policy.
Thank you. Any other questions? Um, so there was a recommended motion that Council is comfortable with that, I can move in the chair that's.
I have another question. I just, I just have a question because I do a lot of media stuff, so it's kind of important to me. So just in the real world, if I, like, at present time, sometimes I take a media inquiry on the weekend. Now, how would that, would this policy change that, or we just work around that?
Thanks, Mary-Lyn. Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it would be within this policy or my perspective or the C A O's perspective. I don't want to speak for, for anybody else, but I don't think that the policy aims to sort of restrict, you know, necessarily restrict the media connections and relationships that already exist. And, and, and also there aren't specific, other than the process for determining a spokesperson and the process for determining a spokesperson during E O C activation and notification internally and things like that. There aren't specific processes for, you know, step-by-step dealings with individual media inquiries that come, that come at us. And so I, I don't think that it would be our, our aim within this policy or within our processes to put a stranglehold on, on anything that is already working. And, and I know that we've been building really good media relations over the last term. And I, I think that all of us want to continue that. And so I don't think that even with the policy or, or the process would be to take a step backwards from things that are already working.
Super, thank you. So I will, from the chair, make the motion to, for staff to be authorized to bring forward amendments to the media policy. Seconded by Councilor Anderson, I do have just one for comment. This is, thank you very much. And then bringing this to Council, there will also be time to, to be able to look at those amendments to the media policy at council meetings. So if there are further information, you'll be able to look at the policy in general and be able to comment further at that time. That being said, all those in favor, seeing that opposed motion carried. Which brings us.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Larson, which brings us up to the next adjutant one, next item on the agenda. Five point two downtown pay parking program, a report from Infrastructure and Public Works. And I see Ms. Atanya stepping up to the plate here, so I suspect our C A O will have a brief comment first.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to introduce the staff's report this evening for regarding implementation of downtown parking programs. So staff have provided an extensive report in the agenda package today. We've included a summary of the feedback and the themes over the last couple of virtual sessions. And we have another virtual consultation session scheduled for Wednesday at from four to six to go over the options that are being presented here to Council, the Committee of the Whole this evening. There is a recommendation from staff, and that's in an effort to continue the discussion moving forward. We look forward to tonight's discussion, where staff have provided three options. And those three options in some way do respond to some of the feedback or quite a bit of the feedback that was received from the community as well as from Council. So we look forward to discussing those in, in greater detail in the moment. And we, whatever option we do decide to proceed with, or if it's an option that may not be included in today's report, we will be required to prepare some policy and bylaw amendments for Council's consideration. So regardless of the option that may be discussed or further examined through today's meeting, there's still further decision-making that's required of Council, which should include those policy and those bylaws. So essentially, we are looking at this year's program, as previously mentioned, as a, as a one-year program and a one-year contract essentially. And we hope that this year's program is going to better inform the program going forward for future years. So I will pass it over to Ms. Rorodin to present her view.
Great, good afternoon, Mayor Council. Looking forward to writing to the report fairly quickly after my PowerPoint and then getting into some, some discussion about what Council, direction Council would like to take. And any questions you may have, have to report or the process to date. Obviously, you can take questions at any time. I think I can move this, through this presentation in about ten minutes, so maybe you can just wait to the end, but. No further ado? No further ado? Thanks, myself. Uh, I'm going to find a fairly brief background on the program. I think we've all been talking about this for a, a big, a large part of this year, and I think we're all fairly familiar with the process. The report goes into more detail than, than this presentation does in terms of background. So we introduced the program in early April. We've undertaken a fairly comprehensive consultation process. We had two community meetings with a third run planned for later this week. We've got a total of sixty-eight questions and a hundred and twenty-five people attending. We talked to Pino, we've had two hundred and seventy-five comments and about fifteen hundred unique visitors. We've added about a hundred and ten or a hundred and eleven new, new individuals because of Talk to Pino platform, so that's, that's. On the social media platforms, I guess, this is a little bit less, a little bit out of my area of expertise, but we've reached eleven thousand or so people. And of those people who've reached those posts, about thirty-four hundred have engaged with us. I personally responded to about sixty emails and, and counting, although it's certain, the flood is starting to turn to a trickle. By far and beyond, the most popular sentiment in the feedback, which I think is no surprise to anybody in this room, is that a resident free pass is what, is what the community is asking for. So the three options that we're going to go through today respond to that community feedback. And primarily, it responds to some of, some of their issues, and we've addressed those in the options as well as this, this, the main, the main concerns, free pass. In terms of revenue allocation, this is a large part of this program. I think it's a part that we haven't been able to bring forward to the community yet, but it's something that we did discuss the budget process in that, in that meeting. What staff took from that was this broad support for recreation, pedestrian roads infrastructure. We talked about a lot of different things, but those seem to be the, the ones that, that floated up. And just wanted to remind Council that we'll be discussing this item again next month at the next council meeting. And I really do look forward to, to that one. The parking policy, to, to move forward with this, we're going to need to update our parking policy. What the policy does for us is helps administer our downtown parking, so includes maps of what we, what our kind of overall general goals are. Helps us at the staff level amend the, to manage that policy. It will require an update to pay parking. And those policy changes are supported well through the existing O C P and multimodal transportation plan. So no matter what option that we decide on tonight or not decide on or option to go with, we'll be looking at doing some policy amendments to that policy. Uh, so just a really brief thing on our options. The feedback we received has informed these adjustments. We're presenting tonight three options. There were, originally when I started writing the report, there was more than five or six options. And, and I realized I just needed to dial back because, again, it's, there's an infinite amount of ways you can do this. We tried to present three different options that respond in various, in, in various levels to what we've heard. So consistent elements across the board. So one question I don't know that was answered well or wasn't presented well by staff in the beginning was what, what we were going to do in terms of timing for parking. So currently, we have a system that has timed areas. So we have four-hour, four-hour areas, two-hour areas, fifty-minute areas. And we, and those are areas that we have enforced on in the past. Those regulations with some minor changes would remain. So for example, if you came downtown and sat in a pay parking area, your, the maximum you could park with is, with the current map would be four hours, and then you'd have to move and find somewhere, park somewhere else, and go back to wherever you're coming from. The offshore parking pro, program program is, is stays the same throughout the three options. Then it's a flat rate of two dollars an hour stays the same. Active enforcement of time parking zones will be the same through those, those three options. On highway fours of Campbell and First Streets to the, to the dock, will change from a maximum two-hour parking to one-hour maximum time. So that would be, obviously, Cameron Street right now is mostly two-hour parking, that would go to one hour, and it would be enforced. The, the park, all other parking zones, with exceptions of the specialty zones like fifty-minute parking, long-term parking, parent parking will be going maximum four hours. Beach parking is largely unchanged. There have been a little bit of rate adjustments here and there that Council will, will introduce to when we come back with the, the actual bylaws. Post Office Bank Municipal Hall parking will be fifteen-minute parking as well as the, the loading spot near Gaia. The program, basically, all three elements allow us to combine our beach and downtown programs. It's something at the very beginning of this, of this process that I outlined it was something I wasn't sure what we could do. And, and then there was an option we couldn't. We've since come back to our consultants and worked with them a little bit closer, and we think we can, each of these are options combined, so those programs. That's something that many people spoke about too. Uh, we're still moving forward with the downtown resident pass. If we move forward with any of these options, we will need to introduce a downtown resident pass. But that looks like administratively, it hasn't been dealt with by staff, or we will get there once we decide what option we're moving forward with. And then again, I just wanted to outline that all the options include free parking. The only, there's, the only difference between free parking is, is how much and where. An option to the, if, there, there is, there is more free parking than there is an option. To uh the if there there's there is more free parking than there is an option one and three. And that was to maximize when when you provide free parking to residents or the credit system, you want to make sure you have more kind parking to try to. Address uh the turnover and and the uh running sides of the of the process. So getting into the options, option one uh is free resident parking. And so this is obviously, you know, this is what the community. Um, had a a large number of the of the communities that asked for. Uh, it would support downtown employees. Who are eligible for a beach pass. Uh, so you you so whoever is has a beach pass would be eligible for 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 any of these programs. Right now, we've got seventeen hundred people uh who have uh beach passes. Uh, this program is simple to implement. Uh, there'd be no cost to park for beach pass holders. We would extend our pay parking hours from nine AM to six PM. Uh, our residents would not have to interact with pay parking program and there'd be and no there'd be no data collection. So basically, it's the beach program brought downtown. You you can come downtown, you're gonna park. Uh, your license plate's not gonna show up to the the car that's patrolling and and it'll move on. And so that's option one. Option two uh is limited pay parking. Uh, so this is again a a simple, simple to implement. We we would base it off the the beach program. Uh, if you were to add up how much a beach park pass holder would have to pay if they were parking downtown all day. The maximum cost would be eight dollars, which is two dollars times four. Uh, pay parking would be from ten AM to six PM. Uh, the the time that everybody would have to pay is currently set at eleven AM to three PM. But that for all intended purposes, that could be eleven AM to twelve AM, it could be one to two PM, it could be one to three PM, it could be the whole time. So there's. It it as is currently offered in this option two, this is basically a four hour period uh in the downtown core where where everybody pays and then outside of that. Uh, you don't. So if you're a resident becoming downtown after three o'clock, you're not paying. Uh, if you come before eleven, you're not paying. But if you're downtown, those. Those four hours were the were the busiest, um, you'd pay. In this situation, uh, residents do not interact with pay parking program either, so it's a similar process where the car will all of the beach pass holders already in our system. At between certain hours, the cars wouldn't recognize uh the beach pass holders. And again, uh, there's no data collection here. I'll just stop there to talk about data collection. So this is something I've I've been pushing back a little bit on with our parking provider. Didn't understand why we can't have that exception. Um, it's something that potentially we could get next year, but right now, the way the program said it was they don't keep any of the data on a daily basis. They dump it except for the revenue stuff because of the privacy concerns that they have and collecting people's information. And so since that number gets dumped. I I'm again, I'm pushing back on uh whether we could adjust that to try to get data. Um, but for now, for twenty twenty three anyways, we wouldn't be getting any. That collected from options one or two. Option three, the resident credit. Um, this program is largely based off the BAMP parking program. Uh, we would reprovide detailed parking of our residence spaces. We would be able to know. Uh, when people were parking uh for how long. Uh, residents would have to interact with pay parking program, so the 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 idea would be you would take out your phone or get to a meter. Hopefully, and uh. Punch in your license plate uh and where and and how long you're parking for. Uh, and then it would allow the the system to see that you were there and and not charge you. So basically, you get a you get a credit for pay parking downtown. In balance, they do it for three hours a day each each resident or. In our case, beach pass holders get up to three hours of of credit parking. Uh, a day and in that system, you can come downtown for forty five minutes and then go back, go. Come back downtown, go back and it resets every day at at midnight. So maximum cost for beach car, beach pass holder, the parking stay would be uh six dollars. Um, you know, it just depends on how many credits provided. That number can be variable, less or more if you're, you know, providing. What would it be, eighteen dollars of credit per day, then you'd you'd have free parking as well. If you provided nine dollars, it just. You can you can move those numbers around. That's probably something we will want to discuss as to today's uh discussion. And then pay parking again would be uh ten AM uh to six PM. So next steps, uh, hopefully today staff can receive some direction on which option council that can afford on. Uh, we then introduce that option to the community on Wednesday, this Wednesday. Uh, potentially have a bylaw amendment uh in front of councils for next Tuesday's council meeting. And then adopting the bylaw on June thirteenth. Um, I understand this is a fairly aggressive uh timeline, um. As it as it is now, we're gonna be about a month behind, three weeks behind where we where we had originally targeted. Um, obviously, we can push this out as far as as we need to. We do run into some. Uh, constraints in terms of council meetings later into June and July. Um, but uh if we want to move forward and and adopt. Uh, something then these the these we probably credit closely to these meetings or or a special meeting. Uh, so right now, staff are internally targeting Friday, June sixteenth uh to go live with with the this program. Uh, and that uh when we go live, that'll include all the the beach program updates, uh where we're increasing rates and adding how we drive. Uh, to the pay parking program. So the recommendations here mirror the ones uh that council has uh in front of them uh in the Cal report, so I won't read. Through them, uh, but happy to. Start the discussion and and hear what council have to say and in what direction you would like to take.
Would it be possible to have the, thank you. Councilor McMaster, I think with the with the way that, um, you know, in the more informal setting of a committee of the whole, the the ability to. Uh, go to each counselor, have uh the ability to, if there are questions initially, um, any specific questions. Uh, for staff, this would be a great opportunity and 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 then we can have a more fulsome discussion once questions are answered to. Um, later on into the meeting, so maybe we'll get the the questions, the technical questions um out of the way and then maybe we'll have a more fulsome. Discussion or debate uh on the issues. Um, if I maybe I'll start, uh, uh, counselor McMaster, I'll start with you on the screen so I don't forget you. Um, if uh if you'd like to go ahead, that would be great.
Um, I think first question, I think from from what I just read, basically telling everybody that. Has to have a beach pass. And I know lots of people that live at the beach, they don't have a beach pass because they don't need one. So now you're telling them they have to get one. I also know some people have a concern about. Privacy and things like that and don't like the idea of having tab passes. Any thoughts on that?
Uh, I don't have anything specific. I I admit to talk generally, um, if we were to move. Away from the beach pass system, it would likely be. We would be likely creating, we have to create some some sort of system for that. Unless everybody's parks for free. We'll have to create some sort of system, so whether it's through our current service provider or whether we do it. Um, we'd have to, we'd have to do something on someone to have share this information if I can't, unless we just don't do anything. And then I I can't really guess. Who lives where um without that information.
That's all for me for now.
Okay, well, uh, we'll circle back, I'm sure, if more questions arise, uh, going, maybe we'll just come around in in a counterclockwise fashion, counselor Anderson.
Um, I can't have any real specific questions. I guess one of the things that. The notion of a like a free pass. Which which I'm kind of leaning towards right now. Um, it. With some of the changes that come about in the time zones. If you had a free pass, it doesn't mean you can park there any longer than the time limit. So. It's still potentially people are gonna get tickets. Um, because those time times are shortened. So. Anyways, uh, I might have more questions as as the discussion goes further.
Thank you. My question was, given that it would be tied into the beach. Uh, passes, what if it's, you know, a household with five cars and so there are. Cars that do not have the beach pass. Um, how would that then work for them as a resident? Would they not be eligible? Park for free downtown? Or would there be a secondary sort of pass system developed for that?
Uh, staff have considered a secondary pass system. This program programs, they did often to choose to cancel today are based off the beach pass program, so. As I understand it, right now it's three cars per person uh that's offered um or three paths, but I don't think it's per re- for residents. So, um, I guess I'd hope that people would would apply for a beach pass in that in that case, again. Um, that's would be based on this existing system. We created a brand new system that would look something different.
So theoretically, if there was a house with, you know, perhaps four adults. Non-related living in it, who all had their own cars and one of them now is just paying for beach passes. Um, you know, member of the public. They would not be eligible for the downtown free parking under this principle. That's it.
Uh, just questions, like I love to say, but I'm gonna give you a couple of questions for you. Uh, so the just going back, circling back to straight comments. All one, option one, two, and three. That's still, all those options are still within the four hour. Limit, so there's no parking, paid parking downtown greater than four hours.
Correct, that's correct. There is, there is some time, some longer time parking here or net that's free. Small portion there.
That's that's free.
That's free. That's right, but timed.
So for my question was actually circling back to Ms. Barrett and, you know, businesses downtown that require longer, potentially longer. Parking, is there an option in the in the in our parking lots? Or somewhere else that those businesses can have a longer term?
We do have, we're not uh changing the 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 rates in our in our municipal lots and those do, uh, they're actually cheaper than parking on the street and. Provide options for long term parking that uh go over, I think up to a month, these are cases are done in a couple of weeks. Uh, so those those remain same the same. And I should also, to me, I just um comment on the four hour timed as uh aspect of. Part of the reason we have it as four hour time, and we actually took out a lot of our two hour parking and changed it to four hour parking, was because we didn't want to change anything. That's just the way that it's been since two thousand and twelve, so it's been over ten years. The community's used to those timed areas. They know, so some people will move their cars currently um to go back and forth at those hours. And so something that we wouldn't be taking, you know, or giving. Due to speed, maintaining what what we have, uh, and try to find a sweet spot between someone coming down for, you know. Uh, to go to a restaurant or or somebody who went on a tour. There there's not really a perfect number for anybody, um, but in saying that, we could also. Change that time from four hours to six hours. It'll mean less turnover if you're doing certain areas, but we haven't gone down to that far without. Start what we have, to not make any changes, see how the pilot project, uh, twenty twenty three year goes and then. Make amendments either on the fly, which we talked about doing this year, or make amendments, you know, to next year's, to next year's program, which we can do, right? As a staff and council, we have that opportunity to to make changes in real time, maybe not in. Minutes, but definitely with weeks, um, if we're if we're if we're noticed noticing certain issues.
Um, mine was kind of. Related to his or Mary was, um, I'm wondering about if passed on our net road, like pass late way where it's. I don't think there's any timed, would that be considered at all? I see a lot of. Turnover there for the beach access.
For sure, it's a it's a great question. Um, it's something that staff has considered. Um, we didn't put it into this report. Um, but I think, I mean, I I think next year for sure, if we're gonna go into a joint contract with both programs. We should start thinking as a community about resident parking areas, which is what you do see a lot of places like back in Jasper, which is resident only parking. Just try to stop some of that um expansion of people looking to find free spots outside the downtown core, so. This program doesn't um do anything there, it doesn't change it from what it currently is. It's definitely on our radar because, you know, obviously concerned with Cypress, concerned about fight for our net. Uh, and then even some of the neighborhoods like Abraham and uh where we're getting pushing, people pushing back up in the beaches area, so. Not considered for this one, but something it's on our list for next year. Anything else, counselor?
Oh, yes, I do have one more. Um. Is there any consideration for like service vehicles like landscapers, plumbers, that kind of thing, that would be maybe continually downtown for. Long periods of time providing services?
It's a great question, uh, something that we flagged at uh early on in the beginning, it's a chamber. Uh, it's something that we do at the beach with the commercial vehicle, see, they could do six and service wheels, for example, can purchase a a commercial vehicle tag for. For their beach. We didn't. Hear, we didn't hear anything back about that up until your question and and so it hasn't been included in the in the in the program. It's not that it couldn't be, like, as we said, we already have an example that works for us in downtown core. It would be something that people have to pay for. Um, but something that that perhaps should be able to support that 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 population. It's a great question.
Yeah, I think you've, uh, thank you. I my questions were almost all answered there. And then just for clarification, the um, the, we've always had. Parking, um, we just, uh, in in terms of the enforcement of the time parking, uh, and I'm thinking specifically of our very short. Uh, time parking periods, um, is it uh our contractor that is responsible for uh the enforcement of that time parking in the downtown core? Is that something that the district will be uh involved with?
Uh, thanks for the question. Uh, it will be our service provider will be uh undertaking enforcement. I understand. That the process will probably mean to be a little bit less at the beach and more in the downtown core to make sure those one hour spots are are turning over. Um, and and again, at this step, we could leave those at two hours if you thought two hours was a better timeframe than one hour. Um, it sort of depends on where we land, where the residents are paying or whether residents are not, or whether they get credits. Um. Yeah, we haven't enforced recently in our class, but I do remember time where we enforced it aggressively on those on on those nice. I think many of us have had have have think it's from that era and so. Um, I think through COVID and and some of the things we were just and other priorities for for bylaw, we 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 haven't been as active in that areas. Haven't asked.
Thank you. I'll look to council now to, uh, uh, council, sorry, further question.
Um, I did just have one more question, given that we're. Um, being asked to decide on these options before the next open house. Um, and knowing that the community is, you know, aware very strongly feeling that they would like to be consulted. Will there be flexibility to, you know, modify or change our decisions after this before we amend the bylaw? Adopt these changes?
Yeah, to the to the chair, to to council, sir. Yes, of course. So. Basically consultation and iterative process. So you have to give people something to respond to, and so. Um, my job is to bring forward reports to council with our recommendations that, you know, the staff is. Them to you, and then council makes a little decision. Council, again, you don't, no one has to decide anything today either. Um, today could just be a discussion and we can come back. The council at a future time with newer options or something else. So there's not really ever a place where you you can't have that conversation anymore. And even if we get to a point where final reading of bylaw and we decided we made a mistake or we needed to amend something, we can still do that. So in terms of the specific question. Um, what my hope was that we'd be able to present the option that council felt the most comfortable with. At this Wednesday meeting, again, this is the timeframes are so tight, um, so that we could get some response back from the community and. If it sounded like the community was. Generally happy with that, then that would be something that count staff would present to council in the report saying, we introduced option X. The community responded or the community that was at the meeting responded such, we heard this on Talk to Pino, these are the emails we received. Um, and then come forward with council bylaws saying. Staff are still recommending or staff are not recommending to move forward on this and that. Uh, it's generally for staff, we won't make. Uh, we won't change our options, like we'll just for options to get something from the council, but the community feedback is truly, it's, you know, the 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 air, the. The renowned council, um, so we're gonna give you our best, but a little personal uh. Response that we're gonna take into account the feedback, but in the end, that 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 uh, the community feedback is truly something that lives with council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just have one again. It relates to the community engagement and it goes back to um the reports uh in terms of the numbers. And it's one of those things that I'm always curious about because often when we have community engagement, three people show up and and have an opinion. Um, is that statistically relevant to uh to the community? So when I looked at these numbers and and I think I know the answer, but I will. Um, with the numbers that we had uh involved in this process, this is a very statistically uh reliable, um. Under uh, how should I put it? Uh, statistically reliable, uh. Sample size uh to give us a good indication of what we think uh the community is is um feeling.
I think I don't think I would put it that way, and I'll tell you why I wouldn't put it that way. And I'm not a statistician nor mathematician, obviously. Um, but my my concern about calling it statistically significant was that the people who are responding are self-selecting. And so you're so when, you know, if I, you know, I choose the survey, you know, you're gonna go out there and do a broad group of people and get people all over random. When people are self-selecting for something that's very emotional, it makes me angry. I don't know that you can assign statistically significant words to it. I can't tell you, it's the most. People who've ever said anything about it on Talk to Pino, my time to Pino, apart from the O C P, and even then, this is definitely the largest, you know. In impact, not surprising since we're talking about parking and parking is is an emotional subject. Um, with lots of different uh aspects to it, so I would, this is, I would, I would, I wouldn't say that I know for sure, but I would say that it's. So I would, this is, I would, I would, I wouldn't say that I know for sure, but I would say that it's, it's, you have to be careful what's statistically significant. And I would say definitely the largest response we, that I've, that I've been had since the time here.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
Great. Um, if there's no other questions that, that came to light in this part of the, of the meeting. Well, um, I, I think let's just open it up now, um, to have a general discussion. I think there were some options presented. And, and I know that certainly staff is looking uh, maybe for some direction. I think that's been fair uh, about where we might wanna go here. And so if, um, and I'll leave this fairly broad and that's the beauty of the committee of the whole. Um, so once again, I'll go out to, to council, uh, they can speak generally and then we can, we have lots of time. Uh, and then if we wanna look at those specific options or uh, in this part of the conversation, if, uh, if you've already maybe identified in your mind um, the options that uh, or none, um, that you're comfortable with. You might wanna bring that forward as well in this part of the conversation, uh, so that at least we can have an idea of where we might be going. And then we can maybe have further uh, conversation around that. And there may be further questions that come, come out of that. I'll look to council. I don't know if we have to do it in any particular order. I'll, I'll look to Mayor Law since he's sitting right here to my right.
The spin is off. All right. Um, just to make a couple of comments on, on some points in the report first, and just to let everyone know. I um, I spoke to uh, you know, because Jasper, Banff and Harrison Hoss Springs were noted in the report. I did reach out uh, to the mayor of Jasper, I reached out to the mayor, or actually Banff, the, one of their senior directors. And the mayor of Canmore, because Canmore also has a very similar uh, program. Harrison Hoss Springs, I did not reach out to, didn't seem, I'll give you some idea why it didn't seem very applicable to us. But uh, but in the, just, 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 this is something about the report, because everybody read the report. Uh, there is a note that Jasper uh, did a pilot project and required everyone, including residents, to pay. Uh, moving forward, Jasper is considering offering residents two hours for free parking per day. So uh, Jasper's pilot project was very brief. Uh, it actually ended up uh, um, giving them the impetus to begin in two thousand and twenty-two, they ran a full season of resident credit. Where they gave each resident a five hundred dollar credit. Uh, and this year, they've abandoned that and gone to just a resident free pass. And, and why that is, and I just wanna go back and because there's another note in the report uh, that hypothesizes about why, or the effects of Jasper's uh, pay parking, it says pay parking revenues. I was here. Uh, pay parking revenues in Jasper, which has similar numbers, basically significantly lower. Likely do the impact of free resident passes. And I did ask the mayor uh, about that. And uh, the stats that I got from him were that uh, uh, very few residents actually used the pay parking program. It had no discernible effect on either their uh, pay parking program efficacy or their revenue. Uh, so that, that was an interesting comment from the mayor of Jasper. Um, and also the uh, credit system that they implemented last year was extremely onerous on their, both their staff and their residents, which was one of the reasons they, uh, they did abandon it and just go for a street pass. Because noting that it wasn't their, the resident, free resident pass wasn't actually, wouldn't actually affect either their revenue or their, where their parking objectives largely, they, they did abandon that. They are a smaller community, they're double our size, uh, and they get a, a little over double our, our, um, our number of visitors. So that's just a little thing I just wanna throw out there. Uh, Scott, that from the mayor. Should I keep going? No, I said, oh, absolutely. Okay. There you go. So that, that was, uh, that was uh, from the mayor of Jasper. Uh, I'm gonna go through a few things that I found interesting is that uh, Banff, ninety-two percent of the downtown pay parking users were visitors. Uh, very few, it was eight percent were, were actually residents, so it didn't actually have a, a, a large effect. They do the credit system. Uh, they do have transit and bus, uh, and they've been very successful with their credit system and transit. They put a lot of money into transit of doing a, a, a successful boat shift. Uh, they used a lot of data and they spent many years uh, getting that data and introducing, so that, so that went very, very smoothly. In Banff, um. Canmore, I spoke to the mayor of Canmore. They also do the three hours. They also have a completely free transit. And uh, they also do a credit system for, for downtown residents. They have a similar, very low resident use of downtown pay parking. Uh, he said maybe, you know, very similar to uh, to the eight percent, maybe a tiny little bit higher than, than Banff. My point is, uh, talking to these uh, folks is that the, the uh, the fear that the resident, a resident free pass or, or a resident credit system is gonna dramatically affect revenues. Uh, was not borne by, by any of these communities, especially Harrison Hoss Springs, that people don't use, the residents don't use, use um, pay parking at all because they live across the street and they just walk. But uh, um, one thing to note though, that uh, Jasper, Banff and Canmore all have resident only parking in the surrounding residential areas. And they all found that essential to the success of their program. Because as soon as they put in pay parking, the uh, tourism, you know, people drive from Toronto. And they'll find a way to park in a residential area and not park downtown. So they all said that that was an essential aspect of their parking, whether it was the credit system or Jasper's free resident system. Um, and in fact, Canmore had, they had a free, they have a, the resident credit. Uh, but um, they, they, their revenues doubled what they projected. So they are very excited about that. That was a, a couple of points that I, that I got from, from those things that just to, to speak to some of the, the, the comments in the report. Um. What else I can say? Um, I think my personal feeling is that noting those, uh, tho- that usage, dramatic usage and noting that none of these options have free downtown parking uh, like Campbell and First Street. So I think that the chances of residents uh, dramatically affecting our, our revenues. Uh, noting the time restrictions, they all have time restrictions. So you can't park longer than three hours. Actually, sorry, that's not true. Actually, you can't park longer than three hours in Jasper. Uh, you can park as long as you want in Canmore. You just have to pay a lot. Um, so, so that's kind of been interesting. And, but uh, that's a, that's a couple of comments that I have to say uh, right now. And why don't I uh, pass it over to somebody else? You know, I'll take another shot later.
Um, at, at that point, maybe uh, some indication of what sort of were you're leaning towards in terms of the options that haven't presented for you. Man, uh, one of your own that you may want to get more, but maybe uh, we can wait for the second round of that.
Just wanna throw that, throw that stuff out there. Um, counselor Anderson.
Um, I just sent a couple of questions about those programs that you looked at. Um, are they year round? Because Can, Jasper and Banff, Canmore, they're also ski communities. So just wondering. So how much of a comparison is it to, to Pino? Is it seasonal parking as well? And also, um, I, I have a feeling Jasper is fairly much a kind of a, a grid patterned community where people can get to downtown probably a lot easier by walking than a linear community like we are. So I, I, I think it's to some extent, those comparisons are fair because those are tourism communities, but they certainly would have some, some other things that their parking, parking program would, that's good too. So I'm just wondering.
Sure.
Do you know anything about those things?
Yeah, sure. Through the chair, I, I found Jasper, we're talking to the spokes, Jasper is very similar. It's May to, to October. Uh, the, the role of last year was very, very similar to, to what the purple option. Three, um, except that they, they would have a resident restricted, resident only area in the, in the surrounding, which allowed anybody in the community to drive their car and then walk downtown or, or, or bike or whatever. So that, that was a all of the communities did that, except for Harrison Hoss Springs. And they're inundated, their, their pay parking doesn't pay very much in there. Their residential streets are, are flooded with people. But anyway, so yeah, so Jasper is, is seasonal, May to October. Very, very similar to, to option three. The other ones are year round, but they change the rates depending on uh, the amount of tourism. So in the summertime, the tourism is very high. They jack the rates five dollars an hour. I think they're going up to this year. Uh, and in, in the winter, they drop it down a buck. So it's either uh, three or, or four dollars an hour or something like that. So there, there you go. And I do, I, I know, I know that's, it's not always a good idea to, to look across. But uh, but I felt like, you know, these other communities have done it. And they've, they've, you know, cut feedback. And so I thought it was really important for me to hear firsthand how they were, what they did, what they would suggest if they were in our shoes. And rather than, you know, us make a decision guessing and then next year changes. You know, if they've done that, I'd say, why don't we just, so that was my emphasis, like find out what, what we also. Um, and then it's just always good to, to know where they're doing. Counselor, sorry.
All right. Um, thank you. I believe through the chair, um, option one is the clearest favorable option for me, even though we would not be able to gather data, which I do fully support us needing, and I know how important it is. Um, just solely for the purpose of with option three requiring a smartphone. Um, many of our residents don't have a smartphone, or if they do, they don't have data on it, which is another thing. And so really trying to reduce the burden and the conflicts with the resident's daily life. I do feel that option one would be preferable over option three. As well as, you know, the importance of identifying um, resident only parking specifically for what uh, you guys were just discussing. That I do think we will see a lot of pushout into our other streets. And again, minimizing conflict with residents is gonna be really important to make this work successfully.
Counselor McMaster, before I forget you. You're unforgettable.
Very much. How could you forget? Um, yeah, I'm probably gonna be out to left field here compared to everybody else. I've said in the past, I believe in pay parking. Having said that, I believe in pay parking as a revenue generator, full stop. Uh, this business about changing people's uh, habits, that just punishes the people that can't afford to pay for, pay for the parking. The more well-off won't change their habits. They're quite happy to pay. Uh, I believe in a fair and equitable system, uh, which we don't have presently at the moment. Uh, because we've got the offshore parking, which creates an anomaly. And I think this is going to uh, add more confusion. Uh, so I can tell you right now, I won't be supporting any of the options. And I think um, we either all pay, that includes First Nations, residents, tourists, or we don't pay. And uh, I don't believe in inviting people into my house and saying, well, you can't use that, but I can. If we're gonna invite tourists, I think if they're gonna pay for parking, I, I'm happy to pay for parking. So that's my little spiel.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor McMaster. I'll look over to Counselor.
Um, I prefer the option one, um, for your resident pass. Um, I, I saw someone on there. I, I do support the expansion of the pay parking onto Howard Drive. I noticed a lot of use on there. And um, I think that maybe I was misunderstood my question. I would actually like to see paper be on our net row. Yeah, I think that's all.
Great. Um, I will uh, take the opportunity to just point out, and I'm sure we'll have another round. Uh, um, well, quickly cut to the chase, I, I'll be supporting option number one, but uh, first, it's not perfect and it's uh, nothing would be. Um, but I, I think the, the reasons um, are multiple in, in the sense that, you know, and I spoke briefly um, earlier and, and we had a conversation around affordability. And in a gen- and this is in a general sense. Um, we, we know that the cost of living um, is increasing and we know inflationary pressures, et cetera, et cetera, and, and generalized sense. And unfortunately, what happens in these situations where these cumulative effects is those that are most vulnerable. We, we all know that potentially any of, as Counselor McMaster uh, spoke to, that folks can afford what, whatever be the maximum uh, parking a day. Um, but those at the most vulnerable stage of, of, of our communities would be the most impacted. And, and I'll just leave it there because it's just a sidebar to that. Um, but the, I think if we think about it in general, there was the, the, the most contentious part is, is the principle in general. Um, and uh, the most common comment that we have found, and that's why I was asking statistically. Um, uh, it was, as you pointed out in the report, that free parking um, for residents would, would be the preferable choice. And, and there's, and there's emotional reasons for that. Um, and I think everybody's recognized that Tofino has changed. Um, the community has changed um, in, in many ways and, and and we accept that to a certain degree. But this is one component of that change that I think is very difficult. And it may be purely uh, emotional, but it is something that we, we can ignore. Um, and it is something that I personally feel strongly about as well, that the fabric of the community uh, is going to, would be altered uh, by these kinds of decisions around paid parking uh, for residents. So combined uh, with those, um, uh, you know, in the, in the report, it was interesting because um, uh, you know, and when I look um, a, at some of the revenue questions, um, they're, they're you know, I should look to my notes just so that I get it right. You know, it, it's the, it's the one where if, if we're, and it was a very wise uh, municipal uh, employee uh, that said once, we can't really do these things just a strictly revenue perspective. And, and I, I certainly accept that revenues will be altered um, for the pay parking in the downtown, but it can't be the only reason. And the other objectives of the pay parking was that turnover. Um, and I'll go back to uh, anecdotally, um, and certainly lived experience. In those peak periods uh, of time, I do not come to the downtown core. And when I do have to come down in those peak periods of time, it is very quick and I do my business and I leave. Um, and I, and I spoke to many residences and I can look to probably everybody in this room that would be able to concur with that sentiment. So I, I, I think the experience of Jasper um, and the other communities where residents uh, were not um, uh, a, a major factor in that revenue source. I, I do believe that would be the case with us as well. So from a revenue perspective, um, I'm not too concerned about that. In terms of the turnover, once again, um, the, uh, the ability for those users, and I do agree that users should pay for that facility. And through our property taxation, we do contribute um, to paying for that um, to a certain level. Um, and so those users that would be utilizing it in those peak times are, are the, are the visiting population. And certainly I think um, that would be the appropriate source uh, to look for that revenue. Um, that being said, um, uh, well, maybe I'll leave it there for now because I think I've spoken clearly enough that the option number one. And this is, um, as was pointed out in, in the report and, and uh, by Mr. Rogers, that, you know, we will do this as a pilot. And we don't have a baseline set of data to begin with, so we don't know what turnover rates are, uh, resident or otherwise. Uh, because we don't have that baseline set of data. And I agree that it would be important. It's the one component of, of option one that I probably um, uh, the most leery of, because there will be no uh, data collection. But I, I think there may be uh, the ability, hopefully, uh, where that might be uh, solvable in the, in the next year from what I understand. But we don't have a baseline to even operate from. So it is hard, uh, because we don't have uh, that data. So I will support option number one, um, and I'll, uh, and I will look to uh, the, the rest of council if there's further conversation. I, I, I just was keeping a quick tally, um, as Counselor Sawyer, Counselor Sloman, um, myself. Um, that have indicated option one was uh, at this point, um, a favorable option to move forward. Counsel McMaster, uh, it indicated that there were no options. Um, I'll look to Mayor Law in a second here and Counselor Anderson um, to see, we're, we're almost at a majority there. So um, I would look to the rest. I would look to the rest, just if there are further questions, absolutely. Maybe indicate which of the possibilities to give staff a bit more direction here. Maybe I'll I'll start over here since.
Well, I'd like to command and thank staff for all the work that's going into this. It's been a difficult process, I think, at times. And it's, yeah, it's it's an emotional issue and and one that has probably brought forward personal attacks time to time. So thank you, staff, for all the hard work you've done. I'd like to also point out that the recommendations that brought forward from staff relate to me, speak to all of the thinking and all of our plans that have come forward over the years and some good research into looking at at parking issues. The studies that we've done over the years and and more current parking program implemented as a beach. Of course, the probably somewhat biased, but good advice we get from having retained a contract with a parking provider, parking enforcement provider. So that being said, we've now got all sorts of public feedback. The the easiest option, and the one that I have been about to the public pressure is to support is option one. There's it's it's not one that I I'm glad to support, actually. It's it's good to support what your community is looking for. But I think what is missing in this whole piece is trying to meet some of our climate change objectives and get that modal shift in place. And this this really won't do any of that much at all, getting people to maybe get on a shuttle once in a while or to carpool or to consider another way other than a vehicle to get to downtown and and do their business. We we certainly have had a lot of success with the bike path. And we do have, you know, a high number of users. And, you know, we in in considering our multimodal transportation plan or CP goals, strategic plan goals. That's that's the gap that option one does not support. And so I I I hope that's not missed as we go forward. It's probably supporting option one by the sounds of it. And I I consider this a pilot program to see how it works. And I hope we can get some sort of a, I am probably won't be able to get some sense, an idea of of how much people might be looking at other options to get to town. But right now, it's it's only, I guess, the non-residents that will be sort of more motivated by by the hit to their pocket to try those other options. So I I think that was also missing in the public discussion, and maybe not might have been the district not making that point strong enough. Or or that that whole aspect of it was missed. I've always considered Tofino a place with strong environmental and climate change aspirations and and we're grounded really well in a lot of those things. And we even pride ourselves on some of the things that we've done in the past in in protecting the environment and moving towards a greener future. And this, I I think, might have been an opportunity to advance that even more and become a better leader in those, in in climate change action. And option one, I think, is the the option that that least advances those objectives. So I I have at the time supported maybe not what is best, but what our community wanted the most. We once had a a great crowd and petition and and crying to not put up a cell tower in Tofino. And I I even though I believed that it probably would have been best to have better cell coverage in the South End for a lot of reasons, I I did follow what our community wanted. And I'll be doing that again on this issue. So that's what I have to say.
All right, well. I'm going to support option one with the majority at council, but I'm going to couch my support in saying that from from what I think, from other communities. As I said before, the the concern about losing revenue, I think is I'm I'm comforted and I don't think it will, even if even if we double the percentage of the other communities to twenty percent. That still is, you know, only eighty, eighty thousand dollars, and I don't think that's going to happen. So that I'm I'm comforted in that. I don't think it's going to hit the revenue too much. I see, you know, for the mode shift, the other communities, and this is one thing that came out loud and clear, is they had significant success with mode shift. Even though they gave residents a pass. Whether it was three hours or whatever. So I I think that that will come. I see the mode shift happening right now. Even with just increased awareness, and and maybe that's the carrot as opposed to the stick, but I prefer to start with the carrot and and to build on on what I see the community already doing. And even this conversation about pay parking has has gotten some elders that I know. They've gone out and got EV bikes and and one prominent local has an EV tricycle. And she now loves it, and she's going to use that to go downtown. So I think that that's I think personally, what I think mode shift, the the biggest the biggest effect on mode shift is going to be infrastructure, the multi-use path. And I think if we can nail that down, the the missing parts downtown and the widening, I think we will see a dramatic increase in mode shift because driving, no matter what, is costly on multiple levels. So I I I'm comforted in the mode shift. I do hear the climate shift argument. I'm concerned about climate change, but I think all those things together. I am comforted that that option one will secure pay parking in Tofino with the least stress on our on our staff, with the least stress on our residents, and the most effect for the most users, which are visitors. And so that that's where I'm going to go for, and I'm going to leave it at that. And I do thank staff. This is a very difficult process, and one of the things that came through, unless you do this for thirty years like Canmore and do an incredible amount of data collection and years and years of public consultation, it's going to be rough. That's what they all said. So I I think I think we're, that's what I'm going to, I'm going to go for option one. Noting all that.
Wait, in the end here, I think I'm stopped, probably heard a clear direction. And maybe I'll just add at the end, I I want to just as Mayor Law pointed out here, I really do want to thank staff on this particular one. This has been an incredible process that let's bounce this conversation going on for about twenty five years, but you know, so there there were certain levels of stresses that not only for staff, but certainly for council. So I really do want to thank staff and for the work and preparation for doing this. And I mean that sincerely. That being said, we're at a stage now where I think there's been some direction. We have a recommendation in here that there may be a change in one small part of it. And and I'll just look quickly to stop to see if if that would, with that simple change in there, would that be sufficient direction to bring up to council in the timeframes that that you have indicated? Great. So maybe what I'll do is I'll move from the chair because I've got it right in front of me. And we'll start with that staff be authorized to prepare amendments to traffic and parking regulation bylaw number ten ninety one, two thousand and nine. And District of Tofino fees and charges by law number one, two, seven, one, twenty nineteen, based on option one. As described in the report titled Downtown Pay Parking Program, dated May fifteenth, twenty twenty three. So is that a, do I, I can I can read the rest of them here, it looks like. And that staff be authorized to prepare amendments to the district. Oh, should that be a separate one? Yes, yeah, I'm just reading that now, thinking that. So could I have a second here, please? Thank you, Counselor Sloman. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. Then next being that staff be authorized to prepare amendments to the District of Tofino Parking Policy in support of implementation of the downtown pay parking program. I have a second here. Thank you, Counselor Sloman. All those in favors? Oh, any comment further?
I'm just wondering if if there's any more discussion we wanted to have around the the beach house being kind of we had a little bit of discussion about that. If if not, then staff will be it's really interesting.
I think it might be my comments you're referring to about the household limits. I think staff probably heard that we're concerned about that, and I'm sure we will be hearing some public during the open house about that. And hopefully, we would be able to make adjustments if necessary, look into options.
I'm just making sure we've had enough discussion about these other pieces. To go with.
Just a question. I know we're already, are we in the middle of a motion?
I asked for comments, have been first and seconded, so we are in the middle, but we're in the comment phase of of that. So
just to comment, well, it's kind of for staff, so I know they're supposed to do it, but just a comment about looking at resident only parking in the surrounding our net viper, you know, that's, is is that something that we should? Is that even possible, or is this something you're going to look at or?
Through the chair, to Mayor Law, I don't think just timeline wise, unless we can pause it for the month or two, I don't think I can. And I and I I would be concerned about the cost of that because we started in terms of control. Much larger, I know we wouldn't have to trouble, you could just sign something if you wanted to enforce it. It's a much larger conversation about the contracts. I think it's a I'm fortunate that we were basing, we're basing this program off the existing program, and so we're with the boundaries of that stopped, is what we stopped for now, now that we've got to where we're headed.
So that in our review of the program for next year, that might be something that we can see on the table for next year. Any other comments on the motion that is on the table right now? None, I'll call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carried. The staff, the last recommendation, that staff be authorized to yes, that staff provide a comprehensive review of the twenty twenty three pay parking program as soon as practicable after October thirty first, twenty twenty three. Seconded by Counselor Sloman, thank you. Any comments? No, thank you. All those in favor? None opposed, motion carried. Excellent. So next, I will look to our agenda. There's probably no unfinished business. Well, there's we have on the agenda now, question period. Do we have anyone sign up? I see no one in the gallery here, but maybe on our virtual world.
Yes, thank you, Chair. No comments online at that. But if anybody's in attendance, is zoom, would like to make a comment or ask a question, they can do so by using the Q and A function on Zoom. If you are raising your hand, you'll need to state your name, your address, and the agenda you're speaking to. So I'll call three times now, calling once. Calling twice. Calling three times, no questions, that's great.
Thank you. I will now for motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Sawyer, seconded by Counselors and all those in favor. Thank you, everybody. Motion carried.